So I just want to thank them very much for being here and for running for this office. Thank you. I think that take over.
Go ahead, Leslie. You often are good at this. You do it.
I'm the timekeeper. I, I, I'm your timekeeper. And we have two candidates. Uh, I want to pronounce your names correctly. April Farao.
Farao.
Farao, okay. And James Gordon, that's a little bit more British. I guess Farao, it must be Portuguese?
Portuguese.
Yeah.
Scottish, by the way.
You're English? All right. What I'll do is you both have up to five minutes to do an introductory speech about yourself. You can say whatever you want. Your background, your qual- qualifications, your positions, whatever you want to say. You can recite Shakespeare, whatever makes you happy. But you have five minutes. And then after that, we go to questions. And people, I'll recognize people, and some people can only ask questions because of technology. They can only ask questions on chat. So I will keep an eye on the chat uh, thing as well. Um, and then you, uh, our questioners have thirty seconds to ask a question. Because I want to hear the candidates, not our questioners talk. And you will have two minutes to answer each question. Um, and we'll alternate who answers each question first. Uh, then at the end, we will tidy everything up in a nice little bow, and you have five minutes to give a
Leslie, I'm gonna interrupt you and just say, we had an issue before. Anybody who asks a question, it needs to be posed to both candidates. Both candidates. Both candidates, yeah.
Yeah, um, the question, and if it's not, I will, I will edit that question so that it is usable for both people. But in order to let you know the time, keep an eye on my box. Thirty seconds you have left. Then you'll have ten seconds left. And then it's time to stop. Uh, so you might every once in a while, look and see what I have, if I have anything up there. Um, and I start out with, um, the opening statements, and I start out usually alphabetically, and alphabetically, April is just one letter in front of Mr. Gordon, but, uh, April, you have five minutes to tell us about yourself.
All right, um, thanks for inviting us on Zoom today. Uh, so to tell you a little bit about myself, um, of course, I'm April Farao. My husband and I relocated here in two thousand from Chicago area. Um, we had been working for all state headquarters. We've got two children, uh, a twenty twenty-one graduate of Hickman High School and one graduating this year. Um, and they have always been in Columbia's public schools. They started kindergarten at Ridgeway and went to West Middle School and are now at Hickman High School. Uh, my husband's, uh, deployed to Washington DC where he's been since two thousand fifteen. And, you know, we could have chosen to move with him. Um, but as a military, you get moved all over the place, and he's done a stint in Kuwait and Qatar since he's been there. So we chose to stay in Columbia because Columbia offers a great many resources and activities for families, but our public schools was also a factor. My kids have had excellent experience and some phenomenal teachers. Um, I recently left my job with the city, um, to run for this position because city employees are barred from running for public office. And so that was a factor in my, uh, decision to run for Columbia Public Schools. And, um, you know, in the past, I ran a property management company. I've got a background in software testing and data analysis and three degrees from Southern Illinois University at Carbondale. And for really the last fifteen years, I've spent a lot of time working directly in our buildings. Um, as a volunteer, I probably spend twenty hours or more a week in our schools doing a variety of things. Um, I've served on executive positions on all the PTAs. And I'm currently the president of Hickman PTA, and in that role, we have also been meeting with district administration for the past two years to advocate for not only Hickman, but for resources for other schools. Um, because we feel like if our family, if we're hearing things from our families or our students of their needs, it's very likely the other schools, the other high schools may be needing those as well. So we try to be a voice for those other schools. Not every PTA has, um, lots of people with time to advocate for, for them. And so we've kind of taken on that role. And through these roles, I've been able to be a resource for a lot of families and teachers, um, from getting kids some additional educational resources when they weren't available in the classroom, helping them navigate the IEP five oh four process. And kind of being a general jack-of-all-trades resource on policy and procedures at, at CPS. Um, I have thought for probably five or ten years about serving in this role. And with Aiden graduating this year, it makes a lot of, um, sense. When I was deciding on this, you know, one factor was quitting my job. The other factor was I'm highly involved at Hickman. And did I want to give up that role and switch to another role? And I figure, you know, hey, if I don't get elected, I'm just still at Hickman, and I'm still giving back to the community. But I'm hoping to be able to serve the community in a wider um, range, um, and serve all of our families as a member of, of the board. And, you know, I have been fascinated by bor- board procedure for a decade, attending board meetings and, uh, watching them on TV. I love during COVID when we could watch the work sessions on TV. It was fabulous. And I learned some really critical information during that time. And unfortunately, the communication isn't always there, but I because I was watching it, was able to share that with our teachers and, and our principal. Um, which was nice information for them to have. And so I feel like my experience, uh, all of that experience is, this is just the life that I have lived. And so I feel like I've been able to be in the classrooms with the students and with the teachers and seeing how um, decisions made at the highest level impact the day-to-day activities in the classroom. And so I'm looking forward to answering your questions about my experience today.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, and now I have to find on the screen, uh, Mr. Gordon. It's your turn to give us, uh, your rundown.
Okay, thank you all so much. Um, thank you, uh, Kathy, and hello, Mule Skinner's. Uh, thank you for inviting, uh, and hosting us and, uh, for showing up for this conversation. Uh, my name is James Gordon, and I am running for the Columbia Public School Board because I want us to cherish our public schools. Our schools are the roots of our community. Uh, they are the ideals of our community made material as accessible places and accessible resources that offer equitable opportunities and equitable support. Right now CPS needs political leadership that lifts up the immeasurable value of our community's schools and understands that public education is a pathway to our collective thriving across generations. As a member of the school board, I will listen and lead and call everyone into our shared responsibility to guarantee that every kid has access to an education that amplifies their unique gifts and accommodates their unique challenges. Uh, I started my family here in Columbia with my spouse, Reverend Molly House Gordon. We moved here about ten years ago. Our oldest kid is a first grader at West Boulevard Elementary, and our youngest will start kindergarten at WBE, uh, this fall. In fact, we just registered her yesterday. Um, we love our neighborhood school and the connections it creates with our surrounding community. Uh, and our family looks forward to the next twelve to fourteen years with CPS. So the stakes in this race are very real to me. Of course CPS has some issues that we need, uh, that need our tending. And I look forward to discussing specifics with each of you, uh, if not, uh, today, then, uh, in any other time before or after the election on April fourth. Uh, but no matter what issue we face, no matter how serious or scary the problem is, I challenge everyone who is listening to me right now to find the bravery to be honest with each other, the humbleness to learn from each other, and the trust to work together for the well-being of our kids and for every generation of our community. Uh, my, my vocational background is, is a great fit for our district's, uh, current challenges. Uh, I earned my master's degree from the University of Missouri School of Journalism, where my studies focused on, uh, public accountability reporting and data journalism. I also went on to, to be an instructor at the, um, at the journalism school. Uh, when I'm not running for school board, I work as a political strategist and data analyst. In this role and in my previous roles as a journalist, a college course instructor, a mentor, a product developer, I have cultivated the following relevant skills. Practical understanding of the power and limits of quantitative methods. Deep listening and synthesizing across shared stories and experiences. Navigating uncertainty in a way that draws others around me into a shared vision and direction. And finally, a critical, community-oriented perspective on social and, uh, technical systems. Uh, most of all, I'm really proud to live right here, right now, deeply rooted in relationship with others around me. Because mutuality and the magic that follows, those are the values that really drive, uh, what I'm doing here in this race and, uh, everything I do. Um, Superintendent Yearwood wants to, wants us to refer to every CPS student as a scholar. And to me, uh, that means proceeding from a premise that every CPS kid has an innate motivation and capacity to learn. And we must resist the impulse to, um, set lower academic expectations for, for other students. Uh, yet if we look at our district's most recent academic performance, uh, how do we reconcile the observed disparities in learning outcomes with this conception of our students as scholars? To me, this is a signal of the work we need to do as a district to remove barriers to learning and student motivation. Beginning first with me and the basic needs of students struggling against social and economic inequities and the lack of accessible resources. I want every student to come as they are into any school in Columbia ready to learn, no matter their circumstances or zip code. And I want every student to have the opportunity to engage with their peers with confidence and the guidance to interact with kindness. I want this especially for those kids who have the greatest needs. Uh, and this is what I mean when I talk about equity. When I talk about accessibility, I mean that we must design and implement resources with the focus on students who have the greatest barriers to access. And I'm not just talking about the physical buildings. I'm talking about the in, in, in instructional technology we use and really every educational resource that we, we will provide to students and everything we, we, we provide to them as a support for their, their learning environment. When we, when we prioritize those students who have the greatest challenges and we remove those barriers, everyone will benefit, and our outcomes will be more immediate and observable, and we're, we will be less likely to perpetuate harms and systemic inequities. Um, I look forward to, um, the, the rest of our conversation today, and, um, uh, again, uh, you could always reach out to me, uh, if we don't get to your question today, um, uh, I do want to connect with each and every one of you. Thank you.
Okay, now we're ready for questions and, um, are there, I'll start out with somebody that's actually in front of me that can ask a question. Anybody want to raise their hand right now, looking? Uh, Pam Spring Steel, you have a question. Uh, and you're muted.
Got it, I'm muted, Pam.
There.
I want to check out your campaign contact. I, okay, both of you have Facebook pages. And I want to know if April has a website. And James, I tried to check out your website, but it doesn't work.
Okay.
So April, could you answer first?
All right, well, both of them get to answer about any technology regarding contacting them online. And we'll start with Mr. Gordon because he was, uh,
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Thank you for mentioning this, uh, Pam. Uh, you can, right now, my Facebook page is the best way to follow, um, uh, what's going on with my campaign. I was just in touch with my contractor who's working on my website today, uh, so we, it will be launched very soon. The, um, the address you have for it right now, uh, which is jamesgordoncomo.org is the correct address. Uh, and we, we will announce on Facebook when the, um, the website goes live. Um, but, um, uh, and, and my email address, in case you want to reach me, is, uh, is the same. It's, uh, James Gordon Como. All one word, the same for the, um, um, uh, the website, and that's at gmail dot com.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Ms. Farao.
Yep. Yes, my website is www.aprilthenumberfourps.com. And that is also how you find me on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. And it is also my email address, aprilthenumberfourps@gmail.com.
Okay, well, well, those are easy questions to answer. Um, now I'll go back, I'll go to the, um, chat board. And, um, Catherine Jensen has a question. And it's, what do you each see as the most important issues facing CPS and the board? And we'll start with Ms. Farao.
That is a really tough question because we have so many issues um, to address. And how do I elevate one to be the most important without addressing others? Um, one of the most pressing issues we have is teacher retention and recruitment. We need to be able to retain our experienced teachers that we have because studies show that when we have strong content core instruction, we can address student achievement. And we have a lot of, I don't have an exact number, but we have multiple schools in which we have non-certified teachers currently, um, instructing. And so that is, of course, going to have, uh, an impact on student achievement. And then we'll be, we need to be able to recruit teachers. And to do so, we need to be competitive um, with other similar districts. And that would include having pay scale plans. Jefferson City just recently launched a five-year plan to get their starting salaries to fifty thousand dollars for their teachers. And, you know, if I'm a teacher and I'm considering Columbia and Jefferson City, I might, that might throw me over the edge to go to Jefferson City. Um, and so we need to be retaining our teachers that we have through, um, professional development through, um, respect and appreciation. I have found by attending some of our collect, collective bargaining committee meetings, they do not feel valued. And when you do not feel valued at your company, you don't necessarily want to stay there. So I think that's one of our biggest, um, hurdles that we need to address. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Gordon, your turn.
The, um, the issue that I want to name is what's going on down in Jeff City in our state government and what has been going on for decades, uh, which is, uh, a, um, well-funded effort to dismantle public education. And I'm very familiar with this, having grown up in Arkansas, which is home base for the Walton family and, um, uh, um, you know, the, uh, the, not naming them as like, um, uh, as, um, funders of this sort of, um, uh, agenda. Um, as well as our own sort of oligarchs, uh, here in, in this state, uh, that you all know who I'm talking about. Um, and, you know, uh, it's just getting worse. Um, and we see in this current legislative session, um, the expansion of, of charter schools in a way that's targeted specifically to our community. And also the open enrollment, um, which is, um, now moved to the Senate with, you know, does harm not only to our school district, but also to those rural school districts. And, um, this is something I think everybody who's actually been paying attention really understands, uh, because Jeff City has had our school districts in a chokehold for, um, for way too long. And, uh, and they're doing that in the context of, um, uh, paving the way to private education, which will not be more transparent, which will not be more equitable and will not, will not be more accessible. Um, so that's the thing I want to make sure that everybody understands is that we have to make sure that we ensure public education for all of our kids. And, um, that we, um, all work toward, uh, building the trust within our school district to, uh, keep, uh, everyone, um, uh, focused on that goal. Um, and, um, I mean, the things that, uh, um, um, April named as well are, are also issues. I've been going to the CMNA bargaining sessions as well, and, uh, the last one we were at, um, that was the one noted mutualities. Everyone agrees that Jeff City is, is the problem, uh, in, in a lot of these conversations.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go back to, um, people I can see on the board there. Kristen Bowen was the la- first, next person I thought had raised a hand. So Kristen, do you have a question?
Thank you, Leslie. I want to thank both of you, uh, for joining us and for running. Um, first of all, thank you. I'm, um, in addition to being, uh, here with Mule Skinner's, a volunteer with Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. And my question relates to gun safety and, um, a- as you probably both know, firearm, uh, firearms are the number one leading cause of death for our kids in this country. And so I just want to ask the general question. Um, what role do you both see, uh, that school board members have in addressing gun violence in our state, in our community? And I will also, I probably should say, um, as a disclaimer, I also serve on the Hickman PTSA, so I know April. I'm a Hickman parent, so, um, I don't know if that's relevant, but I thought I should add it.
Okay, now, we'll start this time with Ms., Mr. Gordon.
Um, thank you for asking this question, and, um, you'll forgive me if I get a little emotional when I talk about it because, uh, it's very real for me. Um, the week before I dropped off Nora uh, for summer school, first time for, um, my kid to be going, showing up to public school. Um, which was a year later than we would, it would have been had it not been for COVID. Um, that was the week after the, um, the school shooting in, in Uvalde. Which, um, you know, it, uh, it was scary. It was very scary for all of us, right? And, um, um, you know, and that was just a moment. I really wanted to feel proud and happy for my kid and, uh, I couldn't, uh, because of what's been going on for, since I was a kid in high school. Like, I was, uh, um, this has been Columbine happened. I was a, I was a student then. And even then I saw how we responded to that kind of events and how, um, ineffectual it was because what came out of that, you know, for me was like weird new policies about what clothes you could wear and like, you know, all this other stuff had nothing to do with the reality that we have, um, a death-dilling, uh, political culture that is run on fear and is, and, and, um, um, is not addressing the actual issues, the material issues. And the thing I want to say most of all right now is that I have, I have zero patience for, um, anyone who is not ready to, um, to, to protect our kids. Um, and I will not back down on this one inch. Uh, I grew up hunting in the, in the, in the duckwoods in Arkansas, deer, all this stuff. Uh, no one's going to question me about, you know, my, um, uh, my commitment to, uh, especially, uh, hunting and, and, and sportsmanship. But, uh, this can't happen anymore.
Okay. Sorry, my phone was wrong. Oh. All right, now, sorry about that interruption. Uh, Ms. Farao?
Yeah, I kind of have a similar story, uh, to James. You know, when my kids started Ridgway, we could always count on being locked down, uh, the first couple of weeks of every school year, um, because of activity in the neighborhood. This was before there was, uh, buzz-in systems. And I remember in middle school, my, um, youngest had a YouTube channel that was quite the rage. Um, and I remember there was, um, some shootings in the neighborhood, and later that night, he recorded a incredibly heartfelt, um, response to that, you know, and it shows the fear that our kids live in every day. Um, I have never shot a gun. I don't hunt or anything like that, but I absolutely agree with the Second Amendment, and lots of people in our state, um, enjoy their guns for a variety of, of reasons. And I think the two can coexist, and I think one of the roles of a school board member is we could be looking at some curriculum that we have in our schools. You know, we have curriculum about, um, substance abuse, um, overdosing, um, sexually transmitted diseases. Um, I don't know that we have a curriculum on safe gun storage. Um, that would be one thing that could be, um, added to our schools. Um, just more information and more information to students. When they see something, say something. There's going to be a presentation at the board meeting on Monday night from a, a set of students um, exactly about this topic, and I'm really looking forward to seeing their full presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Let's see here. Um, okay, uh, there's, um, questions on chat from Scott Crystal. How do you propose to address a person or group who believes their morality views are superior to others as those issues arise? Okay, we've seen a lot of people like that. Um, Ms. Farao, you get to be the first.
Everyone's experiences are very real to them, and I think the best thing that we can do is listen and have open, honest communication with people. I have had, um, some very frank discussions with people that do not agree with me. And I still am able to work with them, provide them with resources. And so as a board member, if I have people that are coming to me with, you know, mask mandates, or we're closing down the schools, or CRT, or some other what is the hot topics of the moment. Um, I'm going to listen to their concerns and talk to them about what's really going on in our schools and how we can address that and try to find some common ground with them because a lot of, a lot of people, um, do just want to be heard and want to feel valued. And I think school board members can, um, address a, a lot of that by having open, honest conversations with people not like them. So that's how, one of the ways I would approach it. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Hi, Mr. Gordon?
Um, I just want to echo a lot of what April just said. Um, uh, it's healthy for us to have very real and frank and honest conversations about, um, uh, our values and how we live them. And, uh, that is a, um, something that we all need to do, um, in order to uh, learn how to do, in order to live, uh, well together in, in society. Um, as a unitarian universalist, my adopted faith, um, uh, you know, what I'm absolutely opposed to is anything that resembles, uh, coercing people, uh, into, um, uh, a particular belief system, into particular religious practices, into, um, particular, um, even just saying certain things. Like, I don't need anyone to believe something, uh, um, that they don't want to believe. I don't need them to say things that, that they don't want them to say, that, 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 that they don't want to say, but like, we do need to be honest with each other about how we live together and how, um, uh, our choices, uh, impact each other. Um, and I don't think that that's a, um, really, um, um, like, I don't think that's really an ideological argument, uh, uh, and, and although some people want to make it into that, um, um, you know, I'm being very clear that the, the work I'm doing right now is political, and this is a political position that I'm running for. It is nonpartisan, though, and the differences between the two need to be, um, uh, we need to be really clear about because, um, it, uh, how we, how we live together, how we live well together is, uh, a political question. And it is bigger than like, you know, who you voted for in the last presidential election or which church you go to.
Thank you. All right, the next person who had their hand up was our old reliable Tullama family. Uh, I don't know if it's Herb or Sue.
I would greatly appreciate it if you referred to me merely as reliable.
Not old, all right, I'm sorry. Not old. All right, I'm sorry. Are young, young Herb Tullama.
A question for the two of you. Thank you both for being here. Um, regarding your stance toward and what you plan to do regarding career programs in the Columbia Public Schools, we do not talk enough about them. Sixty percent of stu- of eighteen to twenty-four year olds in this country as a whole have not and do not attend any institution of higher education in those years. That's the majority. It's probably a slightly smaller number in Columbia Public Schools, but it's big. We have good things in the career program, but that is grossly underfunded, underappreciated, and underpublicized compared to Canada, Germany, the Netherlands, Denmark, Norway.
Okay, Herb, do you have a question?
What are you gonna do?
All right, and we'll start with Mr. Gordon.
Uh, thank you, Herb. Uh, this is a, I'm really glad you asked this because um this is a great example of the kind of adaptations our public education system needs to uh be ready to make. We're past the point now. Um, you know, uh, I think it's really important that our schools um give everyone a pathway to success on their own terms, which may not require them to go to a a four-year college uh like I went to. Um, but it does require us to um uh be supportive and to give them those opportunities. And um and not to, I I, you know, I get really angry when I see the way that's the our our public education system, and it did this when I was in high school. Uh, and it continues to do that. I think it 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 has this or has this sort of bias. We want to rank kids and we want to sort kids and like sort of preemptively assign them but to to particular fates before they really have the time to to explore and understand uh who they are and what they care about and what they just like to do. Um, and I think that what that looks like in terms of like specifics in our education system is, you know, we have some really great like um uh places where we're doing like project-based um learning environments where kids get to um, you know, uh, work on substantive problems in a more collaborative and open-ended way. Um, and I think that that's a um, I want to see more of that kind of stuff. Um, if somebody else raises a while back, I think it was Laura Wakefield at Mode. Um, you know, we've we've got some particular regulations that may just be outdated around how um uh we support kids who want to, who may want to learn like uh auto mechanics or whatever um because of um uh we we anything that would anything would give kids those that supportive learning environment that's also safe is uh I I'm down, I'm down with that. We need to figure out how to do more of that.
Okay, fine. Thank you. Uh, Ms. Farrell?
Well, um, we have here in Columbia, the uh Columbia Career Center, where a lot of our students do go to take culinary courses, broadcast journalism, web design, welding, um, and provide a lot of opportunities for kids to not necessarily um like James said, not everyone's path is college. And there are, I think I mentioned this the other night at Legal Women's Voters, um, very lucrative lucrative positions um and careers for students to go into that don't require a college education. And we might need to uh promote that more within our student body. I do think one of the things that we could do is it can be a long drive from Battle to the Career Center or Battle to Change a Bus at Hickman to go down to the Career Center. A lot of our um uh classes are down there. We have a few Career Center classes at Hickman High School. I think the Career Center is a great resource and we have kids that come to the Career Center for classes there from different schools in our community and Harrisburg and Centralia and kids from our private schools. So they're utilizing that resource as well. But I think if we could find ways to expand some of those classes in our, actually in our schools, it wouldn't be such a barrier to reach those classes. If I'm a student and I want to take a class at the Career Center, I'm going to miss part of my college algebra class and then I'm going to miss part of maybe my AP American History class just on the drive. And so that's that's an obstacle that we need to overcome as well. But um I think we need to at least continue what we're doing and expand on it as well.
Okay, thank you. Oh, shoot. I don't know how to turn this stupid timer off. Okay, it's off. Um, the next um question is, I think Alice has had a question for some time. Uh, Alice, uh, do you have a question?
I do, and um not an easy question to ask. Um, but first I want to thank you both for running and um wanting to serve the school district in the best way you believe possible. Um, so what, we have to be strategic when we run public campaigns. What do you believe are the consequences of five good people, all of who I would support in this office, continuing to stay in this school board race when there are only three openings? And um and then uh possibly electing one to two very, from my perspective, undesirable candidates because we're diluting the vote. Thank you.
Okay, now we'll start with Ms. Farrell.
Alice, I appreciate that question, and I know we've talked, you know, just very briefly uh about it. Um, and I I don't know that I have a really good answer. We do have a lot of great candidates. I believe um most of the people that are running, I could work very well with. Um, how do we not dilute di- dilute the vote? Um, we need to encourage all of our friends and everyone to get out and vote, period. We need to, we have a debate coming up on the twentieth. We need to pack that auditorium with our supporters. Um, and, you know, yeah, maybe someone will drop out and that will change, change the vote. Um, and you know, we've still got four weeks and there may be changes in people's lives. But um I think the best thing that we can do right now with the people that we've got in the race is get out and drag your friends to the polls for them to to vote. I'm sorry, it's not a better answer for you, Alice.
Thank you. It's a hard question.
It is a very hard question. Thank you.
Uh, all right, Mr. Gordon?
Yeah, uh, thank you, Alice, um, for asking this. Uh, and I want to echo what April just said. Um, it seems like the underlying concern here is voter turnout. And what I would ask everyone here to do, um, and to the best of your abilities, uh, is turn out voters who are aligned with our values. And, you know, I'm really optimistic, I'll just say that, because we uh our recent fi- campaign finance reports, um, right now I am like um, right behind Chuck Basie. Uh, and we had an event last weekend at the in the the park just down the street here, which was well attended by um parents and educators. And thankfully, the weather held out and people who couldn't make it to True Fals anyway, um, we're all there. Uh, we've got another event, uh, Park Party um at Stevens Lake next week for lunch. And um the energy is just really strong and powerful. And um uh our yard signs are going up all over town. April's R2. Um, I'm just getting really excited. And you know, my role right now as a candidate is to is to do exactly that, is to inspire voters to show up to the polls and vote. Um, and um I'll just also point out that, you know, we're we're well past the point where if somebody dropped out, their name is still going to be on the ballot. And so there are going to be some, that's an opportunity to lose some votes. Um, you know, I don't know what happens when like um uh a a name is on the ballot and people vote for that, you know, in a certain number. So uh I just think that we've got it. We've got this slate of candidates right now. And um now it's just a matter of turnout. It's 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 GOTV time. GOTV time.
Okay, thank you. All right, um, let's see here, questions. All right, iPhone to everyone. I'm not sure who iPhone is, but they asked a question. How can you, as a board member, improve transparency for the district? And we'll start with Mr. Gordon.
All right, um, these words come up a lot in there in these discussions. And I just want us all to pay very close attention to the context in which we discuss uh transparency. Um, there is a particular candidate um who will take his shot every single time uh we have one of these forums to talk about something like showing uh gay porn to fourth graders, and that's his context for discussing uh transparency. Um, also, um, you know, our teachers feel like they're under attack for the for the books and the curriculum that they're teaching. And so those people who are asking trans- transparency in that context, I worry that if we just, you know, implement more transparency measures uh without being intentional and mindful about it, we could end up doing more harm. Uh, and so when I hear the, when I hear transparency, my mind goes to something deeper and more relational, which is trust. And that's what I'm focused on as a candidate and will be as a board member, because we've got to do the deeper, the deeper work, the relational work of of bringing everybody into this collective project of providing a public education for every kid in this community that's accessible and equitable. Um, and um, you know, there are some other, and the 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 concerns around transparency are rooted in something very real. And I would just articulate them in slightly different ways. Um, some people are worried, some people are um frustrated by the um the lack of communications and like public information systems being accessible. We could definitely work on that. And I think it's like an an accessibility concern that we can focus on. Um, there's also the communications of how do we actually um provide within the district, uh, you know, from the district staff to the building staff. Um, those communications that keeps everybody on the same page and in sync. Uh, that's a communications issue to me, not necessarily a transparency issue. Um, but yeah, regardless, I think that uh we uh need to need to pay attention, uh, otherwise um uh we could, we could make things worse.
Okay, thank you. Um, all right, Ms. Farrell, it's your turn.
So the question is, how can you, as a board member, increase transparency in the district? And I do think James hit on a couple of things, and I know he's heard me talk a lot about making um meetings, all our our public meetings accessible, um, live streamed and recorded so that they benefit the public and board members that they can um um revisit those if they have questions or want to learn more about the content if they weren't able to attend a meeting. And I believe he's right, you know, that goes more to accessibility of the information. We do not make information readily accessible or easily found um within CPS. Um, like I said, I've been around for fifteen years. And our communication issues and our ability to convey information to parents, teachers, has been going on for a really long time. There is a disconnect um in who needs to know what when. And I know yesterday at the Parent Advisory uh Committee Meeting that many PTA members attend, they got a lot of great information on things that are happening in our schools and um how issues are being addressed, and their responses were, hey, that's great information to know. Why do we not know about that? Why are you not communicating these things to all of the CPS community about how you're dealing with maybe um behavior issues at a school, how you're dealing with achievement at a school, opportunities that exist? There might be communication coming from a principal to those parents. But the community, the CPS community at large, doesn't know that information. And so there was a lot of encouragement to the superintendent to just be more forthright, honest um and transparent about all kinds of things that are happening in the district. And so as a board member, we can encourage that as well. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I think Al or and or Mary Jo has had their hand up for a while. What is your question?
It's me. Um, when Columbia is compared to other school districts in the state, usually we come out near or at the top and and part due to the quality of the schools and part due to how smart the people that live here are. In a report that came out this week, we come out much worse. And I'm wondering what you make of this? Is it just a statistical glitch? Is it real? And what do we need to do about this, if anything?
Well, that's a good question. I was what was on my mind too, Al. All right, Ms. Farrell?
So there's questions about the um annual progress report that came out a couple of days ago where CPS scored seventy percent. If they were doing accreditation this year, we would just be in the accredited category, um, very close to being provisionally accredited. Um, I don't think it's a glitch. Um, I think, you know, it's something that's been going on for years. Um, I was also just reading the curriculum audit that was posted last night. It's three hundred and thirty pages long, so I haven't quite gotten through it. Um, but they discovered a lot of um disparities and inconsistencies um in instruction and goals and how we evaluate data. We're supposed to be a data-driven district and we're great at collecting data, but we're not very good at taking that data and deciding on an implementation plan. Or once we've implemented that plan, how we then evaluate the success of that. And so those are some things that we need to work on. We also have schools that perform very well individually, which helps bring our number up to seventy. But we have schools that are performing very low. And so we need to look at that as far as where we're placing our resources. And like James talked about equity before, you know, equal, uh, equity doesn't always mean equal. And so in some of our schools, maybe we need a teacher ratio of one to fifteen. And other schools are one to twenty-two. You need more resources to accomplish and bring up that achievement because you need more dedicated time for instruction in some of our buildings than maybe in other buildings. And so I think that's something we need to look at as well. But I think the curriculum audit that, once I get finished reading the whole thing, is really going to provide us some good feedback and opportunity for attacking that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gordon?
Um, I, there is definitely a signal here, uh, the difference, and that's that's real, but we have to um now now is our opportunity to go a little deeper with it. This is one of the things that um the insights that I always offer up uh in my day job uh as a um, you know, doing strategy with a particular um focus on data, um, you know, we have to hold conclusions lightly when when we're looking at them just from a purely quantitative perspective. Um, and there are other methods that we need to adopt here, uh, including the qualitative ones where we actually go to the school, into the schools, or we actually talk to the people who are um uh facing these challenges and figure out what's really going on. And that's what we need to do next. We we, I I just want to be sure that we don't react um with too much fear and um without, you know, uh, more bravely like engaging with the problem, uh, including those who are um experiencing it. Um, because we don't want to, uh, there's one thing that I think our educators really need who are the most precious asset to our district. We don't, they don't need to be like m- more managed than they already are. And we don't need to like measure our students more than they already are being measured. Um, if anything, we do less of that stuff and figure out the ways in which we may be um, maybe have maybe have taken those um those sort of managerial tactics a little too far. Um, and so, yeah, I think that the the work now is to uh engage more deeply with with these problems, including uh exactly what Ra- um, April was saying uh in terms of equitable equitable opportunities. And um, um, you know, because we're 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 a city that's growing a lot and our district's getting very big too. And so it's going to be some mundane stuff like transportation to schools and like educational resources that may not be facilitated in the way they need to be so our students can use them. Um, that's the stuff I'm interested in finding out more about.
Okay, fine. Thank you. All right, let's see here. We'll go back to the chat room. We've got people asking questions. Um, uh, from David and Carol Mallory. Everyone, including you, gets to vote for three candidates. I assume you will vote for yourselves. I would like to know what two other candidates you might vote for. Uh, Mr. Gordon?
Really put me on the spot on that one.
Yeah.
Um, April's been super involved, uh, and she has a lot of deep knowledge. So um I am uh really glad to be in this race with her. Paul Harper has is also been super involved and um really has a really keen eye for, especially for the financial uh pieces of this. Um, I will just say also that like I will just say also that like I've had a really great conversation with uh with Chris Warren uh and um he's someone that I feel like I could definitely work with if we were on the board together. Um, I don't know John Lyman that well. I I've had a few conversations with him. He's he's obviously cares a lot about our schools. I've already named four, haven't I? It is a problem that we all have, right? Uh, but you know, there's a, there's a few weeks to decide this still, so you know, I'm not I I would encourage everybody to keep an O in mind till they go 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 cast their ballot.
Thank you. And Ms. Faro?
Well, um, you know, my mother always taught me that you don't ever ask anybody who you're gonna vote for or who you did vote for. So I will echo what James said, though. Um, I have had conversations with everyone um during this process, some more than others, and I would say at this point in time. We have seven candidates, I'm one. There are five other candidates that I feel I could work very well with. Um, every single one of our candidates has a different strength um to bring to the board and I've been uh very pleasantly happy with all the conversations that I've had with each and every one of them. But I will uh say that I'm gonna vote for myself and then uh I will decide as we get closer.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's see, somebody on the screen that I haven't called on yet is David Rathel.
Ye- yes, um. Will the candidates uh commit to completing the three-year term of office for which they seek? And will they call upon other candidates for the school board to similarly similarly commit to completing the three-year term of office they seek?
All right, that's a simple enough question. Ms. Faro?
Um. Yes, um, one of the reasons why I'm running is because I just can't step away from CPS. So uh and I've designed my materials so that, you know, they won't be outdated in three years. Um, or should I not win? I can just run again next year, so I'm absolutely committed to um serving another term. Will I call on the other candidates to um eh declare their intent to serve their other three-year terms? Uh, sure. I mean, you go into this knowing it's gonna be a three-year term. If you're not willing to upfront commit to serving a three-year term, then you shouldn't run. Now, there could always be circumstances like a death in the family that prevent you from um serving the rest of your term. But when you go into this, knowing it's a three-year term, you should intend to do that and I would expect that of all of our candidates today.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Gordon?
Uh, yeah, I will absolutely commit to um fo- uh fulfilling the three-year term and running again if I were elected um. And um yeah, I've been telling everyone uh as I've been involved in this, like this work feels too important and urgent and frankly fun to stop. Uh, so um uh, you know, I'm gonna be involved with a specific focus on schools um um for the foreseeable future and, you know, Molly and I are very rooted in this community uh and we look forward to um years and years ahead of us at CPS. Um, and yeah, like I I wanna every other candidate who's running right now and who's asking voters for their support to commit to um to serving out those the the three years that they are running uh of their term. Um, and um I I will do that myself. Uh, I mean, I can't really imagine what would take me away from that, but there could be something, but uh um I'm committed to to filling uh the the term and also uh running for reelection next year. Um, or sorry, next uh the next time around. Thank you.
Thank you. And we're running a little short on time, but I'll have one more question perhaps. And then the five-minute wind up. And the one question I see on the, in the chat is from Steve Callaway. I think it's a good question. I'm just, I like to inject my own thoughts. Um. As a board member, will you advocate strongly and publicly for district diversity, equity and inclusion initiatives in the face of pressure from the state that is legislators and the attorney general? I'm referring to curriculum, book banning, LGBTQ, et cetera. How do you read the temperature of teachers regarding district D E I efforts? Uh, Mr. Gordon?
Uh, I will absolutely um advocate for those measures and I also think it's important to be very clear about what we mean when we talk about diversity, equity and inclusion. Um, because I have noticed when I talk to people about this, uh it's and this includes educators specifically. Um, when I say equity, they hear D E I trainings, um which are not what I'm really talking about. We're we're doing those and those are great, but they're really also very limited in terms of dealing with the systemic issues that are not a responsibility of any one individual, but all of us collectively. Um. I'm not interested in as in naming and shaming people or making them feel guilty about uh their privilege um or anything like that. Um, I'm I'm really down with the material terms of equity, which is uh access to resources. Um, and e- even even in especially if that means something different for somebody with a different ability uh for somebody with different socioeconomic circumstances. Um, that material definition of equity is what we need to really uh be bringing more people's attention to. Um, if we can do that, then we have inclusion and inclusion means that people are involved. Uh, and we um and they feel included, right? And if we do inclusion, then we have diversity, which is a wonderful place I would love to get to where everybody is in this place of mutuality and we are doing creative, interesting things. Um, you know, discovering and exploring all these different ways of being human together. Um, I just would love to see us get to uh that place. Um, because I think that's the good place. Um, and uh yeah, that's uh, that's where I'll leave it.
Right. Thank you, uh, Ms. Faro. Boy, you keep moving around. All right, Ms. Faro?
Diversity, equity and inclusion, those are the words of the day. Um, to me, it is you know, Gen Z is the most diverse population that we have ever had. About forty-nine percent um are um biracial indigenous people of color. Um, they have a variety of abilities, a vi- variety of sexual orientations, gender identity. They are just a huge melting pot that we always call America and we have to be including more materials and more experiences in the classrooms that students can identify with. We know that students um in some cases can learn better um or connect better with the material when it's something that they can identify with. And so we need to be looking at recruiting um more people that look like our diverse population. We need to be sure that we're including stories and um literary works and materials that are from a variety of our population. Um, I spend a lot of time at Hickman and I talk to a lot of teachers and I have not heard anything negative from them as far as the diversity, equity and inclusion trainings that they're getting. Um, they seem to be very much about trying to look at every child as a child, not labeled um that they fit in this bucket or that button, but addressing the child's needs because this child has the strength or needs these um interventions, not because of what bucket they fit in. Thanks.
Hey, everybody, I'm noticing that it is already um past one o'clock. Kathy, are you ready to move on to the wrap-up statements? I mean, not Kathy, Leslie, are you okay with us moving on?
That we should have them wrap up uh and we'll
To be respectful.
Yeah, and we'll um we'll start with Mr. Uh Gordon to wrap things up. You have up to five minutes.
Okay, um, thank you uh all for um being here today and inviting inviting us. Uh, I feel like this has been a really great conversation and uh y'all are asking some really um smart and pointed questions and um uh that's that's how a forum should be and uh I feel really, so I feel really good about this and uh I just wanna say thank you and express my gratitude. Um, again, my name is James Gordon and I'm running for Columbia Public School Board. I want us to cherish our schools. I believe public education is a pathway to equity and our collective thriving across the generations. And uh I want us to um all be part of that project together. Um, I'm out here talking about equity, accessibility and trust as a a platform for how we adapt for uh the changing uh size and demographics of our city uh and for their present and current cha- uh our present and uh future challenges. Um. If you like what I said or if even like just a little bit or curious about hearing more, um I would encourage you all to please reach out uh to me so that we can talk about this because I could, I feel like I could just I could uh have these conversations uh um just uh all the time for as for as long as I can see into the foreseeable future. And um it feels really good to be to be uh to be here with you all. Um. If you um, again, like it's important that we all do the work to to turn out the to to turn out voters uh and support those candidates that we um believe in. Um, and I and I wanna also challenge you all to if there's a candidate you believe in, eh who is saying the things that you want to hear said, um, support that candidate. Um, uh and do it, set aside your fears and concerns uh and do the brave thing. Um, that's the um that's the that, that's what I, that's what I want for our community is to feel, is to is to feel that kind of pride in that um uh bravery for uh moving in the direction that we all wanna be in together. Um, uh. We are having an event next um uh Saturday uh in Stevens uh like Stevens Lake Park. If you like uh pizza tree pizza, please show up and um uh enjoy us for lunch. Um, we're having folks um uh at our house tomorrow to do some uh volunteer volunteer work. I'm just gonna leave a a form that you all can fill out. If you're interested in participating in our campaign and supporting us, please do that. Um, and um, yeah, I think that's uh, that's that's where I will leave it and just say thank you again and um don't forget to vote on April fourth. Uh, and my name is James Gordon. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, Ms. Faro? There we are.
I think James mentioned earlier, I think that he uh he's got some experience in political strategy. And he's always so well-prepared. He's got his Google form up there. That is a great job, James. So if you wanna help me out, you'll just have to go find me on Facebook. I'm not as well as well-prepared, but you know, this has been, like I said, my life for fifteen years and I have got a great passion for it. Um, I just love being in our schools and hearing from our teachers and our students on their experiences day to day. Um, and I believe that is what makes, gives me a unique position um to serve on the school board. As I said, I've been um involved not only at the local individual school level, but also at the district level. It is not unusual for me to sit down and start diving into policy on a Saturday night to wrap my head around uh how that applies uh to our district. And I'm really excited about some of the potential work that the board can uh come up with in the future, setting goals based on the special education audit and making progress on issues found in a curriculum audit. And those are absolutely things that I would be passionate about and I'm excited to potentially get the opportunity to work on those things to move our district back up to being the stellar um reputation and place that people want to come to work and that have a reputation for excellence in education. And so those are some things that I am looking forward to working on. Um, I lead my life by transparency, honesty and ethical behavior. And you know, we talked earlier about um you know, groups of people who might wanna push off their beliefs on someone else and you know, I feel like I I am open to having conversations with all kinds of different people. I mean, that's part of what we do as a school board member. We are representing everyone and I I give a speech at my PTA meetings every year that I tell the people, you know, we have twenty-one hundred students at Hickman. Um, so we have, you know, thousands of parents and not all of them are going to see eye to eye. And my job as a president is not to um judge what your issue is. If you have an issue and you bring it to me, then I'm going to address it, whether I agree with that issue or not, whether um, you know, and if I can address that issue directly, I will do so. If I need to get you a resource, if I need you to get you the documentation, if I have to help you walk through the policy, I'm gonna do that. Because my job is not to judge what is a very valid issue for you. It's for me to provide you with the resources that you need to be safe and comfortable in your schools. And so that's one of the areas that I have taken a lot of pride in with working with our families in the district. Um, of course, my focus is on improving our student achievements and also making our learning spaces and our working environments great. And I think that we can also do that by um optimizing our human and financial resources. I think, you know, the curriculum audit pointed out um that we're a very solvent um um district. But we don't have anything in place that is more of a performance-based budget, so we do X. But we don't have anything to say that we've put this money into this initiative. How successful was that initiative? Is that where we need to be putting our money? Would that money be better spent someplace else? And so we need to start looking at that as well and we might be able to capitalize on some um resources and get some more resources into our schools that clearly have a higher need. So I am excited to look at that. I understand the time that is needed. Um, as I said, I already spent minimum twenty hours in the fall, it's fifty, um working with our schools and I'm like a dog with a bone. Um, so I hope that you'll vote for me and let me continue the work that I have been doing for several years, but just at the district level. And if you uh want to volunteer to my cause, you can find me on Facebook because I'm not as prepared as James. And I do want you to just come out and vote because I think we all have some really super awesome candidates that really have a focus on the future. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I remember some remarks and everybody is uh appreciates that you both are running. Um, it's a courageous thing to do. And now I guess it's Sarah Caitlin's time.
Yeah, definitely. Candidates, uh, look at the chat. There's some love notes to you there.